For the invocation of Pastor John Franklin of Salem Church, the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Let's go Lord in prayer. Father God, praise your name tonight. I knew in my heart, Father, this would be a packed house. And Father, I thank you for that. I thank you for each and every person here tonight. I just give you thanks, Father, for your love, your grace, your mercy. And Father, at the end of the day, we are all your children. Father, I just pray a blessing upon this meeting tonight. Thank you that we have this process, that our thoughts and concerns can be heard. And Father, we thank you most of all for your love. Father, we thank you for Jesus and his love for us. I lift all this up to you in his holy and precious name and all of God's people, said.
Amen.
Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now in moment of silence in recognition of all U.S. military serving here and abroad and all public safety. First on the agenda, we have the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any amendments for the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add the Patrick Springs Fire Department capital improvement request to new business.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second for that?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Overby.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We will add that to new business. That will be new business number nine. Up next, we have approval of the meeting minutes from August 11th, 2025 and August 25th, 2025. I'll accept a motion for those. It's your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve both.
We have a motion to approve both. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Overby.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, we have the approval of the bills, claims and appropriations. Is there a motion to approve those or any discussion at this time?
I've got a couple of questions on those.
Can we go ahead and make a motion to approve it and then we'll discuss it? Or do you want to discuss it first?
Go ahead. Yeah, that's fine.
Anybody want to make a motion to approve it and we'll discuss it after that?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Now discussion.
On the paid bills report for August the 20th, Analyze Corporation, what is all those charges for?
What page?
It's on page 39.
See, that is a, it's a service for the number of hits that are made to the county website, whether an email to a county email address or if someone comes to look at the page. We pay for so many thousands of hits annually from a company that monitors that.
Why is it split up so?
For each of the different departments that has email addresses based on that.
And then what's the 1,600 for that's separate?
That's the sheriff's office gets the most number of hits.
Gotcha. The DEQ permit for $952 on page 40?
Yes.
What was that for?
It'll be reimbursed by the applicant. It's a DEQ permit application fee and the applicant reimburses.
And on the unpaid bills report, there's a credit card purchase for solar panel and hardware.
Can you tell me what page or who the vendor is?
It's just credit card services, Amazon, on page 47.
And the charge, let's see?
$535.
That is for emergency services department. Is he here? If he can answer that.
That is solar panels we put on for the new battery backup at the tower.
Gotcha. And then there was a charge for Dan Valley tractor for $10,332.
Do you want to speak to that or me too?
You can.
Sorry. The Recreation Director has a 2019 Husler mower with 1,200 hours on it where the engine went bad and it was going to cost in excess of $4,000 to repair it. So they were offered a trade-in for a 2025 under warranty with the net cost of $10,000 that is already in his equipment budget. He's not asking for any more funds, but right now they only have two mowers, a 2025 with 200 hours on it and a 2013 with 1,600 hours on it.
Why wasn't that brought to us ahead of time?
Well, it's part of the maintenance budget and he went and got three quotes. We have not ordered this yet. We were waiting till after the meeting. So the options were we could pay $4,000 to fix an engine on a mower that we don't know how long it's going to last, or we could pay $10,000 for a new mower with a warranty. Like I said, he got quotes, did the procurement correctly. We have not bought it yet. We're waiting until tomorrow to see if the bills were approved.
I just don't understand why these things come up at the last minute. I mean, the last mower purchase that we had was brought to us ahead of time. You know, there's inconsistency on when stuff is brought to the board and when it's not.
Well, so the mower that we bought based on as part of the budget process last year was we, that was from the mower broke from the year before and we needed to replace it. So we were able to get that into the budget process. This one just broke a couple of weeks ago. So when a piece of equipment goes down, unfortunately, we can't always foresee and you know, we budget so leanly when we do our capital budget. We only ask for one mower, not two. We were hoping this other one would limp along for another year or two. It did not. So.
I'd just like to see a little more consistency on when things are brought to the board because when there's a charge of that amount of money, I think that's something that we need to discuss ahead of time instead of just throwing it on here and hoping it gets approved without any discussion.
Well, I apologize. As I said, the money is in the budget. It fits into his maintenance budget, but it is up to y'all. If y'all want to pull it off, that would be completely up to y'all. Like I said, we brought it to you the immediate next meeting from when it broke.
And then there was a purchase or I guess it was a credit card or no, purchased for $300 for diesel exhaust fluid and $90 for diesel exhaust fluid. We're buying it by the 55 gallon drum. I hope if we're getting that much for $300.
Can you give me a page and a vendor?
52 Napa Auto Parts.
That would be another question for Scotty.
So how much was the $299? How many cases was that?
10.
10?
I think it's 10. Two of them were one case.
Why is it split up where we've got $89 for one and then 299 for something else?
They all ordered it. They sent what they paid.
Oh, they sent what they had one day and then from the rest the next day.
Okay.
So two cases off gives us one.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Okay. Any other discussion on the bills, claims and appropriations? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, we have the public hearing. VDOT roadway discontinuance of Route 694, Dogwood Road from the intersection of Route 697, Crossover Drive, 2.06 miles east of Route 697, Crossover Drive, a length of .06 miles. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, the Department of Transportation will consider discontinuance of a segment of road, 694 Dogwood Road in Patrick County as described above. This matter is being considered upon the request of the Patrick County Board of Supervisors on behalf of the Patrick County School Board. You were notified that citizens' interest in giving written or oral comments may do so at the public hearing. VDOT staff will be available to discuss information regarding the proposed ordinances. There was contact information posted as well. Before we start with that, I'm going to read our public comment guidelines and then we will proceed to hear the public hearing and comments. Public comment offers citizens the opportunity to address the board either in person or in writing on matters relevant to the responsibilities of the board to maintain a respectful and constructive environment. Please adhere to the following guidelines addressing the board. Please direct all comments to the board as a whole, refraining from addressing individual board members or employees of the board or county. Respectful conduct, personal attacks as well as the use of insulting, profane or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Scope of topics, comments should pertain to issues within the purview of the board and local government. Topics beyond the board's control or unrelated to local governance are not appropriate for public comment. Question and answer, public comment is not a question and answer session. Board members will not respond to questions during public comment period without permission from the chair. Enforcement, the chair may rule a speaker out of order for violating these rules. Upon a second violation, the speaker may be removed from the podium. Eligibility, only residents of Patrick County or property owners in Patrick County are eligible to address the board during the public comment period. Time limit, each speaker will be allowed five minutes for their comments. The board clerk will signal when five minutes have passed. The speaker is allowed an additional minute to complete their comments. However, if multiple citizens wish to address the board on the same issue, they may appoint a spokesperson to speak for up to 10 minutes, provided they forfeit their individual speaking slots. Chair's authority, the chair has the authority to manage the time allocated for public comment, including limiting the number of speakers, shortening speaking times or waiving any public comment provisions as deemed necessary. Sign up procedure, a sign up sheet will be available on the podium for citizens to register to speak. Speakers will be called in the order of sign up and additional speakers may be accommodated if time permits. Submission of comments, speakers may provide copies of their comments to the clerk for inclusion in the meeting minutes. Thank you for your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and productive public comment period. So with that, I will open the public hearing. The first name we have would be Ed Anthony from Mayo River District.
Oh, I'm sorry. I never looked up. My apologies.
No, that's okay. Just before we get started.
If you will, I'm sorry, Mr. Anthony. Can you stand down for just a few minutes?
Just before we get started, you know, we've got the sketch. You've all seen what the discontinuance would look like and the improvements that we would like to make in conjunction with that. If, you know, you decide to go down that road in July, you would ask us also to give you some alternatives to that and we have that to discuss as well. So if you want to do that after the comment period, that's fine. We can address those alternatives.
Which one would y'all prefer? Go with the presentation. All right, well, let's go with the present. What you have first.
Okay. Come on. Jim Hayes with me. He's from our traffic engineering office and he helped me put some of this together. But of course, this you would see is the discontinuance or the road closure as it's known. Alternative two is actually it's called a speed table. It's not like a speed bump or speed hump. It's more gradual. That's about 22 feet long and it's tapered. So it's not such a, but it does slow vehicles down. It's proven to slow vehicles between 9 and 10 miles an hour down from their current speed. This is alternative three, which is a rapid.
Rapid flashing.
Flashing, I always get that wrong. It's a push button crosswalk signs that would flash warning that people are crossing. And in conjunction with that, we recommended kind of redoing the crosswalk, extending some sidewalk so that the students would be using a sidewalk all the way from school across to the gym and into the gym. But it would involve some sidewalk work as well. So those are the two alternatives we've come to present. Okay?
Any questions from the board now or?
I do have a couple, kind of just to make sure I've got a good picture in my mind. The intersection of crossover and Dogwood, that would be an improved curve, correct? So it wouldn't be a hard turn. It would be an improved curve. Improvements to crossover, would that be widened a little bit or?
Yes, we were talking about wedging like a foot on either side to make sure two buses could pass.
Okay. Also, the intersection of crossover and Abram Penn, specifically headed back towards, say the Reynolds Homestead to the left. Is there going to be a bank taken out? Is that going to be widened? What will that intersection?
Widen slightly. It's all within existing right of way. We could get the width we need for those turns.
And then also the intersection of Abram Penn and Harden Reynolds Road. So if we go through with this, traffic would have to go into Harden Reynolds Road especially, and I'm thinking of farm equipment with trailers and hay and that kind of stuff. They would need to make a left onto Abram Penn and then they would need to make a right onto Harden Reynolds Road. What would the intersection of versus going straight across from Dogwood, straight across Abram Penn onto Harden Reynolds? What would that intersection look like? I know you've got the, it's kind of, in other words, would that be improved to the point where someone with a truck with alarm, trailer with hay or farm equipment, would they be able to make that turn?
We haven't looked at any improvements here, but we can do that.
Okay. All right. And final question is, would crossover still remain crossover or would that become part of Dogwood? I think there's at least one residence there that would have an address of something, something crossover. Would they keep that address or would crossover now become Dogwood?
You know, we may look at renumbering, but we wouldn't rename.
Okay. All right. So that residence there wouldn't need to change their address and that kind of thing? Okay. Thank you.
Quick question I had is looking at that number one up there. All the buses I know will be routed directly in front of the school. They'll make an immediate left, come through basically the parking area of the school now. They'll make another left and get right where your pin is. And if they're headed to Patrick Springs Primary, they have to make a right, correct? And then make another right onto crossover.
Right.
Are they going to be able to make that turn without crossing all the way over Abram Penn Road when they pull out?
Yes, we didn't see an issue with that movement, but again, that's one we can look at.
That's the one. I had a question about that. Okay. Any more questions before we move on to our public comment?
I mean, that's my biggest concern on that intersection is people making the left off of crossover onto Abram Penn and people making the right from Abram Penn onto crossover. That sight distance there, those trees go right up to the road. I actually went out there a couple of weeks ago to try to take some pictures and look and you actually can't see down the road until you get all the way to the yellow line to actually even be able to see the flashing school lights down there.
In order to make the, to turn navigable, because of the skew of crossover, that would have to be kind of clear now and wide now. As you said, we believe we have the right way.
I just want to make sure that's part of the plan.
Yeah, we've got to do a lot of trimming of overhang and thinning.
Because you get two school buses trying to make turns right there and it's going to be awful tight.
I don't think it's quite as bad as Dogwood and Abram Penn, although where you all have, where the state has repaved that, it hasn't proved that a lot. And because of that mole, it's kind of a blind spot there too and it's not the safest spot either.
Anything else? If not, we might come back to you all here in just a few minutes, but right now we'll go back to Mr. Ed Anthony from Mayo River District.
Thank y'all for allowing me to jabber for just a moment. Passed everybody out a little bit of basically what you've already heard tonight, I guess you could say. I'd like to thank y'all for allowing me to come. I have, since last we were here two months ago, I've been out talking to citizens in the community and we have started a petition that is, I guess you could say, finished tonight. And it's basically going in an area of where the school system, Harden Reynolds meets and so forth, all the students and families and so forth are there. And it also ties it with the people, business owners and churches and so forth, any ties to that area, farmers and so forth. Okay. As of last check, just a few minutes ago, we had, make sure I tell you the right thing here. 450? 460 plus. 460 signatures. We have them back there. I'll be turning those in to y'all that are opposed to the road closing. Everybody is basically agreed that what they feel that we need more than anything else is an improved crosswalk there. The things that have been done since where, you know, where crosswalk wouldn't even open before, that's been repainted. But there's a few other things need to be done. Harden Reynolds still has no flashing light on it. When people come up, they see this 25 mile per hour speed limit sign that's right there at the school. So people don't know any better that it's 25 any time of the day. So there needs to be a flashing light on Harden Reynolds. Also, we would like to see flashing lights at the crossover, both directions. We'd like to see something like, my preference would be speed bumps that would definitely slow somebody down, but we need something to just make sure that people are controlled. And I'd like to also see barrier rails that drop down when the students come to go across so it would stop traffic. And all this stuff can be done automatically or it can be done for push button by a teacher or someone else, an adult. And there's ways to lock it out when you don't want it or if you want to leave it there all the time, you know, all that's possible. Also with this, this is going to hurt a lot of our local, we don't have that much, but we got, we have some commerce. We have tractor trailers that still come through there now and they abide by the speeds that are there. But they're not, a tractor trailer, say from somebody like Firewater, is not, I don't care what we do up there, it's not going to make that turn on crossover. It's not going to happen. Had several guys I already know of that have trucks and they've gone up there and looked at it and they said, we will not be able to make it. Logging trucks can't come through there either. So another big thing is the school buses, as they pull out before they've been able to go back to Patrick Springs, right back up 694, now that will be closed off and they'll have to cross over that, Abram Penn and that blind spot with students on the bus. And it's just not a good thing. The car drivers will have no place to park, to drop off and pick up students because of the new, where they actually, a lot of them used to come down Harden Reynolds, I mean no, Dogwood back up from, they would park as far as back up from Christ Baptist Church and come in and wait, which was fine. That will be over with. They'll have no place to park. I also understand that the direction away, all the direction when that's cut off, we're in one loop and there's no way the car drivers can get in to drop off their students or pick them up. So I wish y'all would seriously consider this and I'll have the numbers to you, the petition to you in just a few minutes. Okay? Thank y'all.
Thank you. Up next, we have Joy Branham from Mayo River District.
In case you didn't know, it's my brother. I'm Joy Anthony Branham. I grew up in the Stella area. I graduated from Harden Reynolds in 1965. My father graduated from Harden Reynolds in 1937. The school has been there 100 years. The gym has been there about 75. There has never once been a child hit by a car crossing that road. And I think that what the, this idea to close that road in front of Harden Reynolds is going to do is going to make some really unintended consequences, things that nobody has really realized until you're going to do it and then you're going to have to pick up the pieces. A child has never been hit. There has never been an accident there. And if that didn't happen when they were running wild that over there, I can't see it happening now, when every time the children cross the road, they have a teacher with them, which wasn't the way at one time. But you may think it's a sleepy little backwards and it is, but people go through there. Every time I go to church at Christ Baptist, that's the way I go. I just as soon not do this big loop. I don't live in Patrick County anymore. I have been gone for many years, but I do own a farm and a house in Patrick County that I pay taxes on, quite a lot of taxes by the way. And I have a very good, intense feeling about Christ, who was an important part of my life. And I don't think that this is going to help us. We're trying to get a park sort of there at the houses just beside the school. And that means that we would hope that more people would be coming through. And if you're going to block them off so they can't get there with going all around Robin Hood's barn, I don't think we are making progress. I would say that, first of all, if you're going to use crossover road, the fact that you can widen it two feet and it make two buses be able to pass each other, I am going to look at with a real jaundiced eye. That is a very narrow place. If you're going to really widen it, you're going to have to protect quite a bit and you're going to have to take people's land. You're going to have to do an awful lot of work and you've still got, okay, we come down here and you're going to make this kind of thing. That's a T-bone. I don't think it's feasible. I think, and by the way, if you're going to close the road in front of Christ, you just hard capped it just last month. It was, that's, that is Patrick County money that was spent and now we want to get rid of that? I just, I don't, I think that there are things that are better that can be done. We can put in some more safety measures that would make it a noticeable thing. But bear in mind that every time children cross that road, they have a teacher with them. I was a teacher in an elementary school for 42 years. I know all about herding cats and, but those teachers take their job seriously. You have a, an officer of your local police department that is stationed at that school. You can, you know, you could take advantage of his help there. I think, and besides, all those children don't go across every day anyway. I mean, there's an outside play area. And I really and truly think that this was an idea that did not hold up when you actually...
You have one minute remaining.
When you actually examined it. ...when you actually examined it. Thank you.
Up next, we have Kurt Bosomay from Smith River District.
Usually when I address this board, I have a prepared statement that I read, but tonight I just wanted to speak extemporaneously and let you know that I'm happy to see that this issue is being taken quite seriously by the school system, by the Board of Supervisors and by VDOT because this area that is under discussion. I don't often go through there, maybe half a dozen or a dozen times a year, usually over to Reynolds Homestead. But on many occasions, I never bothered to keep count, but if I go up Santa Claus Lane and then take Dogwood out to Abram Penn Highway, usually when I get to that last turn where crossover comes out and you're just going around that turn to see the gym there, I watched the speed limit because I know there's a school up there and I know there's kids, but I've had people riding six inches off my bumper that would gladly go through that area doing 55 or 65 miles an hour. So something has to be done, whether it's closing the road or whether it's one of these other alternatives that are being brought out here tonight. And I just want to make sure that if the vote should go that we leave the road open, that we don't leave it at that, that we, you know, continue to follow up and get something done there. I've also come up, come out from the Reynolds Homestead, come up Abram Penn Highway and watched cars blow right through those stop signs, both from Harden Reynolds Road and from Dogwood. People will look down the road, see if anybody's coming and they'll shoot right across. So you can't tell me that they're absolutely paying attention to whether there are kids going through there. And I'd be interested to see if we could put one of those automatic radar things there that would tally what some of those cars are actually doing going through that area because there are speeders there. I've seen them, I've, I've had them honk their horns at me because I'm doing the speed limit. And again, I'd like to thank Miss Hughes of VDOT for coming here and being willing to discuss this. And I hope that we don't leave it at this, that we extend this concern for the safety of our residents out to that intersection of Spring Road and 58 because we continue to have accidents there time after time after time. And we don't ever get to a public meeting like this where there's something being discussed about what to do about it. And we need that done as well as the Harden Reynolds issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Galen Gilbert from Peters Creek District.
Good evening. I'm against closing the road down there. I do understand the school board's concern, but I did like the idea that Lisa had and I was in Floyd and seeing the lights that they have at their crossover, that they push a button and the caution lights start flashing, letting you know people getting ready to cross the road. And it's in a sort of a blind curve too, so that works out good. And like Kurt was talking about, down at Flat Rock School, they have a radar device sitting there and they read the speed of vehicles coming through there and they know who's speeding and I think they have a right to write them a ticket from it. So there's multiple things can be done to keep from closing that road. I know everybody says, well, nobody's been hit there yet and we don't want a first time somebody being hit there yet. But there's some things can be done to alleviate some of the problems there because last time they was brought up here about, talking about closing that road, they said you couldn't see, well, there was a building there on the corner of crossover and Dogwood and mysteriously that building burned up and that line of sight problem was eliminated. So yes, speed limits there. If they need to write tickets, people get mad, you get a ticket for speeding through there, you shouldn't have been speeding in the first place. So it's not on the deputy's back, it's on your back for going too fast. But I do like the idea of putting some flashing lights there, improve the crossovers and let's just keep that road open. Thank y'all for your time.
Up next, we have Walter Scott from Smith River District.
I'm Walter Scott from Smith River District. I also serve on the school board in Smith River District. I'd like to thank each of you for allowing us to speak on this issue. I'd also like to thank everyone who spoke out, either for or against. We've heard some reasonable reasons why to support, not to support, closing this section of the road. One of the big, big hurdles that the school board has on any project is funding. We are very grateful for VDOT fully funding this project. No local tax dollars. This has a lot in itself. For those of you who don't support this, I ask you to use your imagination just for a minute. If I was a parent up here angry, sad, lots of emotionals, that I hope I never have, speaking about my child that got squished in front of Harden Reynolds School, or if there was two parents up here, or three parents speaking about their child being squished, would you then support this? What is your number? 1, 2, 3? My number is 0. I hope that's yours. I'm asking for the board for a united, five yes votes on this matter. Thank you.
Up next, we have Steve Hall from Peters Creek District.
My name is Steve Hall. I'm glad some of you took time to take a look at what's going on here and I hope everybody According to the paperwork that I got, I don't think the plan that they have drawn up will work. I think that they have the traffic running one way and there's no, there's no allowance for car riders to pick up children after school. That's one thing. I spoke with a couple of landowners on the road that have land on crossover and two of them said that they hadn't received or they hadn't picked up any notification from VDOT. One of them on the corner of crossover and Dogwood. As far as safety suggestions, I think a lot of things can be, can be done. I've heard comments that, that the problem is not really during school. A lot of it is after school activities where kids are leaving the gym and there's no teacher or they just take off. So my suggestion would be that they run the flashing lights, set them up where they'll run during after school activities. And another question is, is has either the local deputies or state police been passed to monitor or look at, you know, what's going on? And VDOT puts, I know they do traffic counts, have they ever counted the traffic that's going through during the day? And somebody just, just talked about Flat Rock, Galen I believe just talked about Flat Rock. Marshall Middle School also has cameras that are set up to where you automatically give a speed ticket if you give them one mile over. That's about all I've got.
Thank you. That is all I have signed up for the VDOT road closure. In addition to that, I received six emails in favor of abandoning the road. I received none opposed to abandoning them. I would like for these emails to be entered into our, our permanent record so they're be available down the road. With that, I will close the public comment period on the road closure. Any questions from the board for our VDOT representatives?
What is the daily traffic count on that part of the road there?
Dogwood is 431 and crossover 78 currently.
And one other thing I'd like to add to, we've heard tonight people talking about specifically the traffic. When it comes to school safety and as you go through the risk assessment matrix, as you look at frequency and damage, traffic is the most frequent. So therefore that puts it higher on the, the risk matrix scale. But there are also other things that come along with having an open campus. And as long as you've got a road separating the campus, you've got an open campus. And that takes some other issues and magnifies the severity of those issues due to having an open campus. So there's a little more to this than just the traffic.
Any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution to support for VDOT to begin the abandonment process of a portion of Dogwood Road, Route 694, as requested by the school board of Patrick County.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I will currently abstain for the fact that I would like a moment to look over, some time to look over our other options as well before I make a decision. So with that, the motion does not pass. Could I possibly entertain a motion?
There was three ayes.
You had three ayes.
Oh, I'm sorry, three ayes. So we are, Mr. Marshall, I'm sorry.
No, you're...
Please restate your, I'm trying to take notes and listen to you. Your motion was to close, right?
Yes.
Okay. You voted aye. Mr. Kendrick voted no, right?
Yes.
Mr. Perry voted aye.
Correct.
Mr. Overby voted aye.
Correct.
And abstained, so we still had three votes and the motion passes. Okay? Motion passed. Okay. Okay.
Don't worry, we'll remember in election season. May I ask a question? Has anyone given any thought to what may happen if there is ever a middle school built? I mean, that is something that in the county we hear brought up quite a bit. And if that's the case, what purpose will this serve at that time?
Okay. If anybody would like to respond to that, if not, we will proceed on to our next public Okay, we'll go on to our next public comment.
I think that y'all don't need the names of all people y'all have rejected.
I would still like to have them entered into the record if you will leave that up here, please.
Okay, I'll leave it for you.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I please ask a question?
Sure.
I don't understand why we're going with the drastic measure of closing the road instead of looking at other alternatives that are, that they've actually suggested. And they're good ideas and they work in Floyd and Floyd has a lot more traffic than we do.
I'll have to ask you to, to reach out to the individual board members that voted for that and maybe they can give you a response. We're going to go ahead and move on to the public comment period. We will open that for our general public comment, starting with Mr. Ed Poole from Peters Creek District. Yes. I'll allow you to speak and then we're going to move on. Yeah, real quickly and then we're going to have to move on.
Two helicopters flew in in the month of July in that monster.
I can't answer that at this time. I'd like to see you reach out to your other board members that went for that. We're going to move onward. It is currently Mr. Ed Poole's turn to speak about the ordinance from Peters Creek.
My name's Ed Poole from Peters Creek District. What I've given you guys are the three definitions of how a law firm, we can interface with a law firm on, we'll call it opinions. And one of them's a legal review, the legal memorandum which you received, and the other is a legal opinion. There's a summation in there for you. I'm not going to go through all of this as to the reasons why a law firm will choose to do the things they do, which is certainly within their purview. So I encourage you to take a look at that, understand what your risks and liabilities are. All right? Next thing I want to bring up is, as a member of the Planning Commission, I received a, an email letter this morning, which is a forward for a cease and desist of spreading false claims. Distribution list looks like the entire Planning Commission. It's from a fellow, Josh Stanfield in Yorktown, Virginia. And it's in reference to apparently Facebook postings by one of the supervisors. I find that, I don't know what's going on, that got somebody riled up clear out there. And what I don't understand is why we got a cease and desist as well, but we do. I think that's about all I've got to say. I just want to make you aware of this. Okay?
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks.
Up next, we have Steve Allen from Dan River District.
We can't shut the door. We can't, it's an open meeting, we can't have the door shut.
Sorry about that. We couldn't hear what was going on in back. Thank y'all for your time. I know y'all made decisions that's hard to make and I don't need y'all to win. What I'd like to talk about is the EMS stuff. It's very heartbreaking that after all the years working with the volunteers to get the training equipment we needed for classes, the Patrick County... the Patrick County Fire and Rescue Association paid for part of that equipment out of their funds, not funds that the board supervisors give. They raised money from back in the 90s for the Fire and Rescue Association to have things that the Fire and Rescue needed. And now it's been given away to the hospital. That's very heartbreaking. The board of supervisors did pay for the ice emulates and the EMS training trailer. The volunteer rescue squads used it for quarterly checkoffs, yearly checkoffs. Some of the rescue squads had their building wired so that the trailer could be hooked up and have heat and air and power inside of it. That was just wasted money now that the rescue squads paid. We also used the EMS training trailer for large events. When Floyd Fest was there, the sheriff's office used it for one of their command centers. We've used it when we had COVID. We carried it around to different places. And the health department used it to store the vaccines in and use it as a command center. I think that if the hospital wanted to use the training equipment that the county owned, I don't think these volunteer rescue squads would have one problem saying, sure, use it. I've been told that the hospital's going to do all the training for the volunteers moving forward. There's not many people sitting in here that knows what the hurdle is going to be to try to have a paramedic program in this county. You have to be accredited through the National Registry of the United States to have that class. For them to teach anything above any EMS classes, someone has got to go to the Office of EMS to their academy and take the EC class, which is Educator Coordinator's Class. That's a long process there for somebody to get that. You can't be grandfathered in from another state. You have to go through their academy. As stated in the, in the enterprise, one board member said, but these are much more professional people and they have a lot more insight into how to provide service in rural counties. How can they know more about what this county needs than these volunteers back here that runs every day? I don't think they do. I've been a volunteer for 29 years, probably longer than some of you have lived in this county. I think, and I worked for the county for 14 half-years. I know what this county needs, that these volunteers. They say they're going to have two, two ambulances on the road. The county has two ambulances right now until people start dropping out on kind of what the board of supervisors is, is letting the hospital take over. How is the hospital going to improve anything over what the county already has with just two ambulances? They're not, because they're going to be doing their interfacility transports and trying to run some 911 calls. I've seen in the hospital contract that they're going to, they want to take over the ALS medications that Mr. Castle has for the volunteers to purchase through. If they take that, is Smith River and the hospital going to be the only ALS ambulances in the county? That's going to really hurt the volunteers. As the gentleman stood up here two weeks ago and said that they are, want to be involved with everything, teaching, they teach the hospital, the doctor's office. That's been going on since 2007. When I was Emergency Management Coordinator in 2007, I worked with the hospital staff, Dr. Cole's office, and the sheriff's office on doing some training. I taught American Heart ACLS, Pediatric Life Support, which is BLS, and CPR. Also, we worked with a high school to have a sports injury instructor come up from Wake Forest Baptist Hospital. We've, we've always been community oriented. Thank y'all for your time and I hope y'all reconsider giving all of our training equipment away.
Thank you.
That is still being hashed out, right, Ms. Sims? The equipment that is still being hashed out?
We're reviewing what was in the contract.
Up next, we have Mr. Stuart Robertson from Blue Ridge District about the Patrick Promise.
Could I just raise a voice in support of what the previous speaker just said? The, the volunteer fire department and rescue medical services in this county have been excellent all by themselves. And I think we need to see a little more performance about, from the hospital about doing its own job before they swallow everything.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, if you will.
Good evening, Chairman Wood, members of the board, County Administrator Sims. Thanks for giving us the time to come by this, this evening to simply say thank you. With me is Greg Hodges, the President of Patrick and Henry Community College. Following your recent budget process, I sent a note to Chairman Wood expressing the deep appreciation of the Patrick County Education Foundation and Patrick and Henry Community College for your contribution to the Patrick Promise. As President Hodges and I did after the school board and the EDA made their contributions, we wanted to just simply come by publicly and say thank you. Yours was a leading contribution to the Patrick Promise. And you joined scores of individuals, businesses, alumni of Patrick County High School, and even some estate bequests in doing so. And all of the contributors believe that Patrick County High School graduates, their families, and citizens need and deserve to have a level playing field with their peers down the road as they consider whether Patrick and Henry Community College is an affordable option for them. You sent a signal to the entire county that you know that a trained workforce is a critical investment in the county's future. And that exactly is the vision of the Patrick Promise. And we're very excited that folks here at home and folks who still proudly call Patrick home, though they live afar, have joined you in sending that same signal by embracing the promise. Very soon, we will announce publicly the results of our efforts to launch the Patrick Promise. We won't go into details this evening, but we know that you will be very pleased that the progress has been years in the making and we'll have exciting news to share. And with our announcement, we hope that others will be energized to join you and to join everyone as we maintain the goal of the promise for years and years to come. We thank you for your leadership and support and appreciate the time this evening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Galen Gilbert from Peters Creek District.
Good evening again. Sort of disappointed with the vote down there at Kreitz, but seems like we banged our head on situations like this before because here we are again. Three little wrecks later, Patrick Springs intersection, and nothing's going to get done. As bad, bad as I hate to say it, it seems like the right person has not passed down there. Poor old Clayton has been through it at least two times now because one of the wrecks that happened within five days down there was his family members again. One wreck happened just about in front of me down there. And I don't know what's going to happen down there. I don't know what's going to be the solution to it. But VDOT has done a study that said that that intersection needed to be daylighted. And they'd done that study many, many years ago, including fixing the curve there at the post office was included in that study. And none of it's been done yet. So I think that that intersection needs to be relooked at and something done, at least daylighted. I have come through there in times that elderly people see that yellow light flashing. They think it's getting ready to turn red and they stop in the middle of the road. And it ain't happened once. It's happened numerous times. So I don't know what the result of down there will be, but something's got to be done. And after reading this contract with the hospital, there's a lot of open end doors there. If something happens and they cannot fulfill their needs, what is the county's contingency plan to back it up and have coverage like we have with Station 8? And really and truly, the hospital won't be, need to be called Station 8. They need to go back to what they were called before, which was Station 6. So like I said, I'm very disappointed with the intersections down there at Kreitz. There's a lot of things could have been done before the road was closed, but whatever the school board wants, school board gets. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Up next, we have Steve Ferring from Dan River District.
My name is Steve Ferring. I'm from the Dan River District. Two months ago, two meetings ago, I brought up a problem with the parks. I did again last month, the last meeting. Tonight, I'm asking for a motion to pass by you to put the parks recommendations on the agenda for the next meeting of the board in October. This subject has been discussed in the public comment portion of the last two meetings, but to date, there's been no response or effort on your part to open these proposals for discussion. All right? To keep it simple, I've listed the highlights of the proposals on this paper below. You'll have a copy. Proposal one, use the dams we maintain for which we have deeded right of ways as wilderness parks. We spend approximately $60,000 a year and don't benefit from this expenditure whatsoever. Let's benefit. Let's make them wilderness parks. Proposal two, have the county maintain our five main parks. This would include paying for all utilities as well. The park associations that have been supporting our county parks would be able to use the freed funds to support their parks' children's activities instead of paying for the electricity. Proposal three, terminate the current lease agreement with Patrick County Agricultural Fair Inc. and enter a new lease agreement for only the ball fields. The current lease and maintenance costs are approximately $50,000 to the county. We should be able to enter into a new lease for just the ball fields at a much reduced lease and not include the building's maintenance. The buildings that we currently use, especially for the older folks lunch, that can be held at the Community College building. Any other use of the large building that's required on a rain day can be at the lease rate that they charge anybody else. It costs us a hell of a lot less money. Proposal four, undertake an effort to consolidate all contiguous properties to the tracks actually owned by the county, at the county parks. In total, all of these proposals, all taken together, are cost neutral to the county. Now, they can be done one at a time or they can be done in toto. But I want you to support the motion to place these proposals on next month's agenda under new business. That doesn't cost you a damn thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will close the public comment period. Up next, under new business, we have request for reallocation of unspent Small Business Development Center funds.
Well, so you have in your packet where the EDA has requested to essentially reuse the funds that were previously allocated for the Small Business Development Center. I won't read the whole thing to you. Just kind of read the, what I put under recommended board action. I said at this time, county administration recommends no formal action on the attached request. While the proposed future uses of the site align with the county's economic development goals, several components referenced in the request remain pending or under development, including funding for a natural gas feasibility study approved by the state in 2024, a pending tobacco commission grant application, and the need for cost estimates related to a water and sewer master plan. Staff recommends the EDA gather cost estimates for these infrastructure components and revisit the request once more information is available. So James is here. If y'all have any questions about their request or Mr. Kendrick, I know serves as the board liaison to the EDA. So I'm assuming Mr. Kendrick and/or James could answer any questions you may have about their request in the attached memo.
Can you have anything to add to it? Okay. So we need a...
There's no, there's no recommended action for this. This is, we just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that the EDA is looking at some long-range items for economic development for Patrick County. And, you know, instead of just, I guess, forfeiting that money back to the unused ARPA funds, using those unused ARPA funds for some long-range projects. That was included in the memo, Water and Sewer Master Plan, Natural Gas Tap, other infrastructure improvements.
I would just say that once we get a couple of other studies in, we will have some more dollar values to associate with that. But we are taking a look at improving the infrastructure here in accounting to improve the economic development. And where we did, and where we did was not able to move forward with the Small Business Development Center. We felt that money, since it was already allocated for one project, hopefully will get allocated to another one that would help us to improve better from where we stand now. We just want to bring it to y'all's attention.
Any questions for anybody that's in the know about it? If not, we'll move on to the Free House Meadows of Dan Brewery Cockrobel Complex and the payment of invoices.
As you know, the Free House Brewery is under construction. It's, they started several months ago. And this is just a request to approve payment of the invoices as they come in so the project can keep moving. The money has to be spent by the end of 2026. It's 100% grant funded. No county funds are involved. But we need, county needs to pay the invoices and then we get reimbursement back from DHCD for those invoices. The invoices are approved by the owner of the property and his engineering firm, and they go through James and the EDA as well. Since our limit on paying invoices outside of a meeting is $5,000 each, these will be in excess of that $5,000.
Just to pass through.
Yeah. So this is no local money that's going into that. So any other questions before? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and have the payment of those invoices.
I make a motion to authorize county administration to pay all certified and reimbursable invoices at the end of each month in which there is.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, we have the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy settlement. Do we have information on that? I know it's in our packet, but is anybody going to speak on that?
I don't have anything additional. As you may have seen in the news, the Purdue Pharma case got kind of overturned and redone. So this is follow-up from that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about that? If not, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan and approval of Patrick County's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against the Sackler family and direct Patrick County's outside counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate Patrick County's participation. the documents necessary to effectuate Patrick County's participation in the settlement, including the required release of claim against the Sacra family and accept the bankruptcy plan.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, we need to schedule a public hearing to amend the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the October 20th, 2025 meeting.
There are several budget amendment requests that have come in, that in total, they are more than 1% of our current budget, which requires us to have a public hearing. The school board is asking for another $500,000 of their 1% sales tax fund. We're getting more information on what exactly those improvements are before the, before the public hearing. The second item is the Free House Brewery, which is a total of $850,000, which we need to amend our budget to include those payments, even though it's a pass-through. Same with the ARC grant funding for broadband, that's $700,000, that's all grant money that needs to go through us, which will get reimbursed by the ARC funds. And then the use of the reserves of the former ARPA funds that go toward the broadband projects, should those invoices come in before the end of the year. And each of those will be at a board meeting to be approved before they're actually paid out. This is just amendment budget to account for those, should they come in.
Okay, so you've heard what we're scheduling a public hearing for, can I get a motion for that?
I make a motion to schedule a public hearing to amend the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for October 20th, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, which became under New Business number nine, the Patrick Springs Fire Department capital request.
Sorry for the urgency, we gotta have a, it's a situation come up with the truck. This year, Patrick Springs is up for capital improvement money for the fire departments. They have asked for a 2007 Spartan walk-around rescue truck, the heavy rescue truck, y'all should have the information in your package, it also comes with several pieces of equipment already on it. They're asking for y'all to approve $90,000 of that money, so they can purchase the truck and get it here, so they can see what it takes to get it painted and the ladder and stuff replaced on the back end. And like Clint said, there's a couple of little things to it. I have Mr. Wittes here with me today to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Only question I have real fast is, I like the truck, I like the idea of the truck, I think it's something we really need. The only question I have is to spend the rest of the $64,000 getting the truck lettered, decal, and equipped. I understand the equipped part, how much is it gonna cost us to get it lettered and painted and everything?
They won't know that till they get it here, to have it taped to the shop to measure it out and everything.
And y'all could approve like the $90,000.
Yeah, we're just asking for the 90 now, then wait on the other.
Because, yeah, I want it to look really good and look nice going down the road and doing it for purpose, so you know everything it's supposed to do, which apparently does everything.
Which we don't have a heavy rig at the bottom of the mountain, we do on the top of the mountain, but we do not have the bottom. So, something was to happen, be it where they can meet and more than one truck is involved.
Yeah, and I think with our new four-lane road, we might need it more than...
Yeah, unfortunately, we hope not, but we'd need to prepare for it.
Okay, that's the only question I had. So, we need a motion to go ahead, it's already in our budget for those funds, all we're gonna do is release them, what, a little bit earlier than normal, they normally come out in October?
I mean, the squads and the stations are, they could come ask for them in July every year.
Yes, they come in.
Okay, okay. So, it's already there in the budget, so I will entertain a motion to release...
$90,000.
Let y'all decide whether the $90,000 or all of the $140,000, whoever wants to make a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to release the $90,000.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Can we clarify that that check can be cut if they need, before October 20th? Or do you wanna...
What do you think they're taking possession of?
The, the truck has to be removed from the premises, that's the reason we had to urge the thing, their truck, truck actually come in early, they're taking possession of their truck, so they need their space, and Patrick Springs needs the money ahead of time to pay for it, that's the reason we're, it's a large sum of money.
Is there any reason, are any issues with cutting the check before?
No, no, just the approval would be needed, since we can't do our own check over $5,000 for a non-recurring expenditure.
So, the original motion was you, Mr. Marshall?
No, no, it was entered.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Overby, would you mind amending your motion to release that check?
Release immediately.
Okay, so you agree with that? Okay, so now we have a motion and a second to release the check immediately for the $90,000 to purchase that particular truck. Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all, and thank you for everything you do. Up next, under Old Business, our broadband update.
It looks like River Street is here, I do not see a representative from Appalachian Power, unless I'm missing somebody. So Appalachian Power did not show up for the broadband update.
Okay.
And that's not from our fault, I promise.
Good evening, Rob Taylor with River Street. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. I have a update for you on our current construction, on the Fiber to the Home project here in Patrick County. If I can get to the next slide. So here's an overview of the, the project that we have, this is the West Piedmont PDC West project, it is covered in the UVADE 2022, UVADE 2023 funding. This project includes not only Patrick County, but also most of Henry County and part of Franklin County. This slide shows you a layout of the fiber that's being installed from AEP to do the transport route. Keep in mind, this is part of the utility leverage program, so they're installing fiber on their poles that can be used not only by them to upgrade their utility infrastructure, but also lease additional fibers to us, so that we can expand broadband into the county to residents and businesses. If we can go to the next slide. This is talking about what's currently going on, AEP has submitted the routes for Stella, Stewart and Floyd, Dobbins, Alumsville, Meadows of Dan, and as well as Polbridge. Splicing diagrams have been supplied to them by River Street, and we also have fiber tails installed in the Stella area. If we go to the next slide, you can see, this is what's going on right now, and this is phase one construction, it's building, we're building out of North Carolina while they're building the connection points or the transport fiber. We have a fiber network already existing in Stokes County, North Carolina, and we're extending that up. We're also gonna bring connectivity out of our Pennsylvania County area, so that we'll have two paths in and out of Patrick County, as well as Henry and Franklin. What that enables us to do, if you can imagine, if we had a fiber cut in one area, we'll still have a redundant connection, so say the traffic normally goes out to the east towards Danville, if for some reason that fiber gets damaged, we can then route the traffic down through North Carolina and still keep everybody up and, up and working. Now, if we have a fiber cut locally, that will take out the local residents, but typically we put a ring in, so that if our fiber ring gets cut, the transport goes from one link to the other link, so that we can keep services up and running. The phase one construction has these locations built into it, Shingle Shop, there's 1,475 locations that will be passed, Nettle Ridge, there's 316, Penn Store was 259, and there's approximately 218 miles total of fiber. Right now, AEP's already completed approximately 60 miles of fiber, that's 59.76, and they have been put in 151 of our slack loops. So if you're driving down this area and you see a black cable coming off the phone pole going down to a black canister, that is where the fibers currently brought down, looped around, and terminated inside that canister, and then the strands we're leasing are brought out. Once they finish doing all that work, they'll do a test and confirm the fibers are working properly, and once they do that, then those canisters will be mounted back up in the electrical space, the, our fiber tail will be dropped down and will be put into a pedestal or a handhold there at the pole, where we'll distribute fibers out to the residents or to the businesses along that route. Right now, the fiber to the state line is, is complete up to Oak Ridge, the Nettle construction should start in Q4, as well as Penn Store and Shingle Shop, all that fiber build from our side should be starting in Q4. Again, right now, AEP is still putting in their middle mile fiber. Once they get that done, the other phase, and terminate it, test it, turn it over to us, the other part that we're, we'll be waiting on is the electronics, they have to light the fiber to turn it over to us, and then we can connect to it. That's all I have, if there's any questions.
In the Meadows of Dan area with the slow rollout basically up there, is there any talk or any vehicle where you could abandon some of your granted drops to citizens?
There is, I'm not privy to that conversation, and if that conversation was going on, it's probably under an NDA, but I believe there have been some discussions, but I'm not sure exactly where we stand. Citizens is a sister cooperative to us, so our home office is out of Wilkesboro, North Carolina, we're a telephone mutual cooperative down there, and so we have good relationships with Citizens and our cooperative organization. We recently had finished doing a purchase with Citizens, where we bought some cable network that they had in Craig County, and I'm sure that any discussions might be going on, or probably going on behind the scenes, I'm just not aware of those.
Anything else?
So I know there's been issues that has slowed the project down, everything from the parking services and running stuff across the parkway and the power poles with the AEP. Do you have a, a projection about when, because I know we also have with grant monies, there's a time constraint with that too, any timetable of getting things completed or...
I, I don't, sir, I will, I'll reach out to engineering, again, a lot of our build is contingent on when AEP can turn those fibers over to us.
That's what I was afraid the answer was gonna be.
Yes, yes, sir.
It's hard to tell until they get them.
And again, once they, once they have the fibers installed, they have to terminate tests, and then they have to reattach their equipment, bring our, our tail down, and then they'll turn it over to us, and it really won't do us any good until they light their ends, and then once that happens, then we can be able to start hooking up customers. So, when I have a better timeline of when we expect to start turning up the first customers, I'll reach out to Beth and let her know, okay?
Or maybe you can come back in and give...
I'll, not a problem, yes, sir.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to, doesn't have anything to do with you, interject that, you know, as Mr. Perry said down here, for some reason, we seem to be having trouble with AEP and some of their issues, I think they issued a stop work order by VDOT due to permit requirements here very recently. Can we, and I'm talking to our county administrator and also West Piedmont Planning, it's back there in the back, can we find out from AEP exactly what our issue is, why we're not getting the permits done in time and manner, why we're being held up? It seems like at every turn, as we're trying to get broadband across our entire county. I don't think we've ever been given a really good answer about why AEP seems to not quite have it together.
We can reach out to Beth and work with Beth on that.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
And also, again, I know that some of these grant money is tied up and it's time-sensitive. Is there any way that we, and I know we've reached out to, when Senator Stanley was here, we met with him, and we asked him to bring it up, to see if we could have those, those times pushed back, to make sure that we don't lose any of the grant money, is there anything that you guys could...
I thought I was at a meeting in which you all actually took some of the ARPA funds and allocated it to another funding mechanism, then that would free up your charitable funds to use...
We're talking about the state grant funds.
Okay, okay, oh, I'm sorry.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, I, I think on the state, they're working on, on that already, because we're not the only project that is behind schedule, there are several projects behind schedule for multiple reasons, but I, I believe the state, DHCD's working on that. I'll reach out to Chandler and ask him to contact that and let him know if their plans aren't there, if he can give them that information.
Cause I, we've had a lot of people...
He might be able to get it over to Beth.
Great, I know we've had a lot of people reach out to the board with those concerns about not finishing in time and losing those, those monies and not being able to completely finish the, the projects. Thank you.
Anything else about broadband update? If not, we'll move on to Old Business, updated tourism sponsorship grant application.
So this is the agenda item that we brought last month that was tabled. The Tourism Advisory Committee met, I guess the following week, and county staff went in to that meeting to kind of answer any questions, provide additional information. There were a couple small edits made to the application based on that meeting, so just bringing this back for the board's approval.
Mr. Overby, you were the liaison there, correct? Anything that you want to add?
I mean, I think we had a good discussion about the whole situation, I, I understand the reservations on both sides about implementing this, but I, I think this is the, the correct way to make this work.
Okay, so any other discussion?
Mr. Houts, did you have any things you'd like to add? No, I mean, we had a good discussion, we got a lot of things, had some concerns with the tax council, we got it worked out, and I think that this is gonna be the best process we can do. Good. Thank you.
Okay.
The AEP rep just texted and said that he was on the way, so I don't know if y'all want to recess and let him come in and give an update? Sorry, I mean, just whenever y'all get done with this, I apologize for...
Um, let's go ahead, I'll entertain a motion for the tourism sponsorship grant application, and how it's presented in your packet.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. As Ms. Sim said, the AEP rep is on the way, what we have next are the reports from the administrator and the supervisors. If it's good with the board, I say we go ahead and do those two items, and then we can, what, hopefully AEP will be here by then, if not, then we'll go ahead and enter into closed meeting. Does that sound reasonable? Okay? So with that, we'll go ahead and have the administrator report.
I don't have anything additional.
Okay, supervisors report, Mr. Marshall?
On August 14th, I attended the school board meeting, on August 15th, I attended the Blue Ridge Two-State Virtual Briefing, where Acting Superintendent Jim Grant and other members of the parks leadership hosted an update on post-tailing conditions of repairs to the parkway, as well as other construction projects, such as the roof on Maverick Mill. A video of the full presentation is available online, and I will include the link here in my report and on my Facebook profile. On the 19th, I attended the planning commission meeting, on the 20th, the CFPT meeting, on the 21st, the Tourism Advisory Committee meeting, on the 25th, Maverick Mill ribbon cutting for the roof, you know, the roof repairs. On the 27th, I attended the Economic Development Authority meeting, on the 28th, I attended the West Piedmont Planning District Commission meeting. I have received a request that when the board hosts presentation by entities related to broadband and phone communications, such as AEP, River Street, or Brightspeed, or any other provider, a dedicated time be allotted for public questions and comments, and I know you do allow that anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, they were asking for something more efficient, I guess.
Okay.
It was also suggested that due to the pressing public interest, these specific presentations should be advertised separately from the standard meeting notice, this was to ensure the public is well aware in advance of the opportunity to address these companies. And again, I know you do kind of allow that, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Up next, Mr. Kendrick.
First, I'd like to make a statement that I was very disappointed with 460-plus people in the Mayo River District that didn't want that road closed, that we didn't do more steady, even though VDOT offered a couple extra auctions, I wish there was still some way we could go back and, and let the people in that area have, have more say-so, I'm sure most of them got kids and grandkids and everything else in it. And to touch on another thing, Galen said about that stoplight at Patrick Springs, I know we had a steady in it a few years ago, but it looks like that thing's just getting worse all the time. And one of those people Galen was talking about was my aunt, that got killed in the intersection, last Friday, with a good friend of mine that was severely hurt in a, in a two-vehicle accident, he broke his shoulder, he's got bruises all over his body. Then, this past Monday, my daughter and three grandchildren was in a bad wreck, totaled both cars in that same intersection, and I don't know what we can do with it, I've sent a message and some pictures to Ren to see if he could do anything on it, but I, I think that needs to be something, something else done. And I think Galen's right, those last promises we got from VDOT to do something about curbs and less interest is into it, I haven't seen anything done, the old ripple strips are there, they're about worn out, so, I just, I'd like to make a point on that, and I'll get off of that. I went during the past month since our last meeting, I went to Mayberry's Mill ribbon cutting ceremony, and that was really interesting, glad to see it done. West Piedmont, we had a meeting, they've got the former director, Michael Armstead, is back, and it was a good, positive meeting, I think everything will start moving, moving better now with them. PSA meeting, they reorganized and elected officers, and had some updates on future plans and updates on maintenance on some of their systems, and I didn't make the EDA meet.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
So, August 21st, I attended a STEP meeting, and then also I reached out to VDOT in reference to a curve on Woolwine Highway just south of Shuff Ridge Lane, where we also have quite a few crashes there. VDOT has added some extra signage, or one extra sign with the suggested speed, they want to try some things first before they go straight to a guard rail. The last crash that we had, essentially the, the car got on the, off the lip and the soft shoulder, along with the ditch, just basically throws you off the bank and, and down, so whatever signage doesn't, doesn't work there. So I sent those pictures to VDOT, and they said they want to try some other methods first, and I'll continue to support having those guard rails there due to the soft shoulder and the ditch throwing through there. And also, I'd like to congratulate Family Productions again for another year, they had a wonderful front porch fest, and job well done with that.
Thank you, Mr. Overby.
I don't have anything additional.
Okay, I attended the West Piedmont Planning District Commission meeting as well, they actually had a roundtable discussion over, over what we needed to do, and I basically asked them to make sure that we're all on the, on the know of what, you know, they can do for us, what we can do for them, to have a much better working relationship. As Mr. Kendrick said, they have some new people down there, and I think we're gonna be able to, to utilize them more than we have here in the last little bit, to the benefit of Patrick County. One thing I am gonna reach out about echoing what Mr. Kendrick said, I was told, I don't know if it's factual or not, that the stoplight in front of Walmart was partially funded by Walmart, I don't know, that's years ago. Does anybody know for sure, sitting here?
Miss Harris told me it was.
That's a typical way that's done, they, they have to put money into that.
Right.
John, then yes, it was.
Yes, it was, okay, well, my question is, and I'm asking you all here on the side, and hopefully going that direction with it, is that something that we would be willing to look at, a cost of, to have it installed, you know, at the cost of the county and not VDOT, is that something we can have done? Do you know, Ms. Harris, I mean, Walmart did it when you were on the board?
I can't, I don't know whether...
Okay.
There's, there's some kind of grant, it seems like it's Safe, Safe Streets or something, you know anything about that bill?
The SmartSkill Grant?
Yeah.
We were actually talking to VDOT tomorrow about that for that intersection.
Okay.
I, I think that's something, even if we have to throw skin in the game, I think there are enough people in the county that would be willing to, to tighten up the belts a little bit more in the budget cycle to kind of help to, to make sure that happens. Luckily, I'll be honest, I come from Lawsonville a lot, I have a farm down there, every time I come from Lawsonville, I turn and I end up coming up American Legion Road, because I'm not pulling out of that intersection with basically five lanes of traffic in the intersection across from me, trying to pull a 25-foot trailer with a tractor on it, so I purposely avoid that intersection. So I would like to see if that's something, you know, maybe VDOT can tell us, even, you know, basically what a rough estimate would be to put one in there. I know some people probably wouldn't be happy with the inconvenience, I know a lot of people, I think, would be much happier with it, I think, does that sound reasonable to...
And I think one of the latest crashes, the sun played a key role in that, so all the flashing lights and rumble strips.
Yeah.
Is not going to prevent someone looking east into the sun and not being able to see the lanes of traffic before they pull out in there. So a stoplight is pretty much the only way you're gonna light the sun.
Crystal, Crystal, maybe Jane probably remembers when, when that full lane was designed there, they didn't want to put that turning lane, they was gonna route it different, and one of the engineers put on the plans, called it a suicide lane, so it says, but, you know, it's gonna get worse when they open the full lane on up, it's gonna be more traffic, more truck traffic and everything else, so something needs to be done there.
So, Ms. Hems, if you can tell us what we learned from the, the VDOT meeting tomorrow, and maybe if they can give us a rough idea of, you know, we're no Walmart, we don't have a Walmart budget, but I think it's something that we'd be willing to, to, to look into as a board. So that ends the supervisor's report, I didn't see anybody come in, did I, from AEP? Okay, it is 7:40, we can take a brief recess before we go into closed meeting and hope that he shows up in that amount of time? Does that suit everybody?
Yep.
Okay, we will take a brief recess till 7:50, does that suit everybody, about 10 minutes? And then we'll come back, if they're here, we'll hear from AEP, if not, we'll go into closed meeting, okay? So we are in recess for 10 minutes.